Please let's take our seats. What is that? Okay, welcome to this evening's meeting. We're gonna have our invocation from Pastor Steve Foster of the Rock Baptist Church. It'll be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. If you would, please stand with me.
Good evening. I wanna be real quick with what I'm going to do here. Just so you know that I'm Pastor Steve Foster from the Rock Baptist Church on Highway forty-two in Rex, Georgia. We are a multicultural church. We're reaching out to the community for what Clayton County is. Doesn't matter who comes or what, the word of God is important to all people. You know, we're officially celebrating a hundred and twenty-nine years here in Clayton County. That's a big achievement. For those who don't know the history of Clayton County, the only other church older than that is Mount Zion. Because it, the Rock, is a mission church of Mount Zion, actually. So, but I have a little bit of an input because I used to work for the Henry County Sheriff's Department. And I was a bailiff at the Superior Court, so I understand the function of law and government. The function of law and government is very important, especially in our counties. The people that serve as the leaders in government, which are you people, and anybody else that's elected, that is you. Y'all are very, very important. You're important because you have that job, because it is an awesome job. And you've been given that opportunity to serve. For this reason, the Rock Baptist Church and myself support you. Because without the people supporting their leaders, it's a fight, it's a struggle. I wanna start off by reading a little bit of Scripture. It's come from Revelation, I mean, from Romans, chapter thirteen, verses one through seven. It says, "Everyone must submit himself to the government governing authorities, for there is no authority except that which God has established." The authorities that have existed have been established by God. Consequently, he who rebels against the authority is rebelling against what God has instituted. And those who do not bring judgment on themselves, for rulers hold no terror for those who do right, but for those who do wrong. Do you want to be free from fear of one in authority? Then do what is right, and he will commend you. For he is God's servant to do you good. But if you do wrong, be afraid, for he does not bear the sword for nothing. He is God's servant, an agent of wrath to bring punishment on the wrongdoers. Therefore, it is necessary to submit to the authorities, not only because of the possible punishment, but because of the consequences. Let us pray. Our most kind and gracious heavenly Father, I thank you for this day that you've given to us. Dear God, I thank you for the word. For the word tells us that we're to submit to the authorities, those who you put in place to do your will and to do the work and to watch over people, dear God. Dear God, I pray for these people who are in service here today. Dear God, they're here for no, they're not here by any accident, they're here because of your will. Dear God, I pray that you'll bless them and watch over them, and watch over the people of Clayton County, and as we support them, as all people should support them, dear God. I just thank you for their service and for the things that they do. These things, I ask you your wonderful and holy name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and welcome to the April seventeen, two thousand and eighteen Regular Business Meeting. The first order of business is the adoption of the agenda. Does any member want to offer any amendments?
Madam Clerk, I'd like to add to the agenda a splotch presentation update. Is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, if unanimous.
Are there any further amendments? Here and now, may we have a motion to adopt the agenda with the approved amendment?
So moved.
Okay, so we'll go back to the agenda. I will place that in form of a motion that item J, Revved-Up Kids Project, which is a program, I believe, in our library system. They're asking for it to be removed. Is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose, if unanimous. Going back to the adoption of the agenda, as for motion.
Uh, yes, I move that we accept the agenda with the additions or changes.
Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chair.
Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose, if unanimous.
First, we have an award presentation in honor of Commissioner Sona Gregory for receiving the Pota E. Costin Trailblazer Award, as presented by the East Point College Park Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority, Inc. With the members of the sorority, please come forward, as the commissioners join you for the presentation of the award.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Deborah Bunkley. I'm president of the East Point College Park Alumni Chapter. And with me is Joyce Wilson, Vice President of Program Planning for East Point College Park. And thank you for having us here this evening. We're here to present the Pota E. Costin Trailblazer Award to our sister and soror, Sona Gregory. So just a few words before we present the award, and I just said this was not meant on this end for short people. Sona Singleton Gregory, pioneer, innovator, survivor, groundbreaker, trendsetter, and creator, are all acronyms for a trailblazer. They also define the work and service of Clayton County Commissioner Sona Singleton Gregory. In the tradition of Pota E. Costin, the first African-American commissioner in Fayette County, East Point College Park Alumni Chapter proudly presents Sona Singleton Gregory the Pota E. Costin Trailblazer Award. Sona Singleton Gregory believes in helping people, and she works hard to make the East Clayton area a better place for families to live and to raise their children. Her leadership and volunteer accomplishments are illustrative of committed social action and enthusiastic political involvement. She represents generations of fearless pioneering women, and makes her community, and by extension, the world, a better place because of her service. Soror, congratulations on your award.
Thank you, Soror. Thank you. When, usually they give out this award down at the Capitol, and so I was not able to make it down at the Capitol that day. And I texted Soror Angela Odom later on that day. I said, "Okay, who won?" And she said, she texts back, she said, "You did." Boom. And I texted back, "You're lying." But if you knew Pota, and I was just so excited, and if you knew Commissioner Pota Costin, you know, and just what a trailblazer she was, and that's what makes this award so exciting, and I'm so honored that, you know, my soror selected me. So thank you, and also thanks to Commissioner Gayle Hanniford, because she set all this up. So, thank you all so much. Thank you. And, thank you. And I'm also gonna ask my husband to come up here. Everybody else gets to have family to come up. So just don't I get to ask him to come up with me?
The board will now present a proclamation. Clayton County recognizes NBA basketball player, Mr. Josh Powell, in celebration of volunteer month, as presented by Commissioner Franklin Warner. Is Mr. Josh Powell present, family, friends?
Well, else he's coming forward. I have to tell you all, we didn't have enough space on the proclamation to write about Mr. Josh Powell. He's one of our very own who played for the Lakers. He also, you're gonna hear in the proclamation, went off to college and was in that winning team against Duke. So, but at the end of the day, he was the one that everyone said, "You brought the heat to the court." So, we appreciate Mr. NBA player, Mr. Josh Powell. Come on up. Your family come on up to see you.
Ms. Charmaine, and if the women of Clayton County are in the audience, I saw a few, come on up. Because Mr. Powell supported us for our reading initiative. Good night, Clayton. Hey, beautiful girls.
And now the reading of the proclamation. Clayton County recognizes NBA star and athletic mentor, Josh Powell. Whereas, Josh Powell is an accomplished NBA player, a dedicated and proven leader, who gives back to his community through his nonprofit organization, Twenty-One Reasons to Give, which provides mentoring, guidance, and direction to youth. And whereas, Mr. Powell was born in Charleston, South Carolina, and raised in Riverdale, Georgia. While attending Clayton County Public Schools, Church Street Elementary, Point South Middle School, achieving the highest honors in both academics and athletics as a member of Beta Club and as a Nike All-American Athlete. In two thousand and one, Mr. Powell graduated twenty-sixth in his class from Riverdale High School with a three-point-six GPA. And whereas, during his time at North Carolina State University, Mr. Powell earned a spot on the ACC All-Rookie Team his freshman year, the Tom Gugliotta Award, and named to the All-ACC Tournament First Team after a record-breaking season, leading his team to the ACC Championship Game against Duke. And whereas, Mr. Powell went on to have an outstanding fifteen-year professional basketball career. Nine years in the NBA, winning two NBA Championships in two thousand and nine and two thousand and ten with the Los Angeles Lakers, and the Euroleague Championship with the Olympia Kost Pyrias in Greece in two thousand and twelve through two thousand and thirteen. And whereas, through his Twenty-One Reasons to Give nonprofit organization, Mr. Powell donated twenty thousand dollars to Riverdale High School in two thousand and ten for a computer lab. He and his team also worked to provide promising youth opportunities to display their talents professionally, therefore strengthening our communities' economic and social well-being. Therefore, on behalf of the Clayton County Board of Commissioners, I, Felicia Franklin Warner, Commissioner, do hereby call all citizens to join me in recognizing Mr. Josh Powell for his exceptional community leadership and athletic triumphs. In witness thereof, I have here on two set my hand and call the seal of Clayton County, Georgia, to be affixed this seventeenth day of April in the year two thousand and eighteen. Felicia Franklin Warner, Commissioner.
You know, too often, we do not shine a light on our great folks that come out of Clayton County. And he could've gone on and forgotten all about us, but he came back and he told me about all the things he'd done. And I said, "Has anybody ever recognized you?" He said, "No." I said, "Well, we gonna recognize you." So I wanna say thank you to you and your family, including my women of Clayton County member here, Ms. Charmaine, for bringing you out. We are so proud to be Clayton Countians because you and your family make us proud. Thank you so much. Mr. Bond said he took his senior pictures.
The board will now hear a presentation on the solid waste transfer station. The introduction will be done by Jeff Matarco, the Director of Department of Transportation and Development, and presented by Jacobs Engineering.
Good evening. At the request of the Solid Waste Management Authority, we are here tonight to present a item about transfer stations, solid waste transfer stations. Josh Lawson, our engineer of record for the county's landfill, he's the one who's been working extensively with the Solid Waste Management Authority, bringing forward ideas on solid waste as well as landfill matters in the county. He is here to present the item. Thank you.
Commissioner, thank you. Again, my name is Josh Lawson with Jacobs Engineering. We're gonna talk about transfer stations, so we'll just jump right into it here. So, we'll first start with an overview of a transfer station. For those of you that are not aware, basically, a transfer station is a building or a processing site where we basically consolidate waste. So you'll have trash come in from commercial haulers, residential, you know, citizens. They'll come in, they'll place their waste there, it's then accumulated, and eventually it's then compacted and placed onto larger tractor trailers or larger vehicles, which then haul that waste off-site to a landfill. Transfer stations can vary in size and features and function. Some of the most simplest versions of transfer stations are referred to as single bay transfer stations. These are usually just three-sided open structures. Sometimes you'll have an underbay ramp where a tractor trailer can back in, as shown in that picture. Other ones don't have underbays. The tractor trailer literally just pulls into the back. You'll have large front-end loaders that'll lift the waste up, place it into the tractor trailer, pack it in and consolidate the waste, and then the vehicle will depart for an off-site landfill. In contrast, you can also have quite elaborate transfer stations combined with recycling centers, where you can have much higher volume capacity. You might have a place for multiple three or four bays to handle much larger volumes. You can also incorporate features like recycling centers, special waste drop-off, as well as greater features in terms of storage of other roll-offs and trailers to maintain capacity. So basically, in terms of transfer station operations, you know, they can receive both commercial as well as residential customers. They're able to drop off, you know, you can receive MSW or household waste, as well as construction demolition waste. As I said, the way the material comes in, you have a tipping floor, which is usually just a large concrete floor with inside the building, where the waste is then placed and accumulated, eventually then consolidated into larger tractor trailer trucks, and then taken off-site. Typically, a transfer station's need is only warranted by a lack of nearby landfill space. So typically, for a transfer station location, this waste is gonna leave the county or the community that it's in and travel some distance, you know, fifty-plus miles to a, usually a landfill regionally located somewhere outside the immediate community. And just for instance, the county landfill would not be a recipient of waste that would come from a transfer station, just due to capacity issues. It would go outside of the county. You can also have set up, like I said before, in certain transfer station setups, you can have places for special waste and recyclable drop-offs for customers. Operating hours typically are mere normal business hours. They don't tend to vary that much, depending on the operation, but they usually are relatively friendly in terms of the hours they operate. And then as for just in terms of vectors and concerns, there are regulations and guidance in place. Transfer stations that receive household waste have to have the tipping floor cleared and cleaned at least once every twenty-four hours in order to minimize odor and other vectors. And then if you're just doing C and D waste, that's a little less stringent, and you have to clean and clear that once a week. So actually, back at the beginning of the year, at the request of the authority, we actually took a field trip out to the Fayette County Transfer Station, where the chairman, myself, Mr. Matarco, and Authority Board Member Rob Leatherwood, who's in the audience today, went out and Fayette County hosted, entertained us at their facility, and we did a tour. I'm not sure if the pointer's picking up on the screen there, but in the kind of mid-right area of the image, you can see the entrance, where both commercial and residential customers enter the facility. You'll see, as you make that first turn, there's a place for residents to drop off tires for recycling. You then come through through their scale house. If you're a commercial vehicle, you then stay straight and go into the building with the white top. That's the commercial transfer station. It's a classical, single bay, three-sided open structure. Residents actually take a detour and head south, where there's a series of receptacles there to receive their residential trash, as well as single stream recycling. There's also a separating area for metals recycling. And then ultimately, the material is accumulated and then loaded onto tractor trailers and exits out of the facility through the exit and heads off-site to a landfill currently located down in Merriweth County. In terms of, you know, one of the things the authority has looked at in terms of transfer station location needs, and these are some general, you know, highlights in terms of what is ideal for a transfer station location. The main thing is, we're looking, you know, you're looking for industrial areas away from residential properties. In the county, you'd be looking for something to be zoned, rezoned as heavy industrial as what the county ordinance requires for any kind of transfer station. In terms of the approximate size to facilitate a single bay transfer station, you're looking at a property somewhere between seven to eleven acres of usable space in order to facilitate the operations. And then in terms of, you know, strategic location within the county, currently with the landfill on the south side of the county as a receiving area for residents to dispose of their trash, you'd be looking to complement that potentially with something in the central region, or in the northern regions of the county, obviously aligning with those industrial areas to keep the like-use types together. Other features are obviously accessible to the public, because it would also be a source to receive not just commercial, but residential customers, as well as in terms of the means in which the off-site destination is via tractor trailer. Some ease of access to some major roadways is also an ideal, you know, idea aspect to the property location as well. So in terms of transfer funding options, there's really two primary ways in which a community can go about funding a transfer station. The first option is a county-funded scenario. And in this situation, the cost can be quite high, because you not only have, you know, a capital front-end cost to actually build the structure, you're now having to pay for that waste to be transported and then ultimately disposed in a facility. So you've got the cost of the transportation, then you have the cost of the final disposal. So looking at a single bay transfer station ranging from two hundred tons a day to five hundred tons a day, which would be deemed kind of a medium-volume facility, your capital cost for construction could be somewhere between four and a half to six million, but the real cost is in the continual annual operating cost, the actual cost to haul and dispose the trash. That can range upwards of three-point-seven to eight-point-three million dollars a year, depending on the volume that's coming in. The other option in terms of transfer station funding is a public-private partnership. And this is a scenario where through some kind of RFP procurement process, you would engage private waste companies. And there, in that arrangement, the private entity would be responsible for all costs associated with design, construction bidding, you know, contract bidding, construction, and operations. So kind of a design, bid, build, operate type scenario. And in turn, the county is, would only be looking at the responsibility of providing suitable property and permitting. The reason why private entities are interested in such kind of a one-site and engagement is, for them, the value of the permitting is very high. It's much easier for them to come into a facility where a permit is already in hand than for them to try to go through the physical permitting process themselves. But this is a relatively typical, common way to go about transfer station funding, is to do the public-private partnership. And that's what we have today for the presentation in terms of transfer stations. So with that, hand it back over.
Okay, thank you, Josh, for your presentation. Let me say this. The Solid Waste Authority Board asked for this presentation to be presented today because the Solid Waste Authority Board is serious about doing something about the illegal dumping in Clayton County. This is only for informational purposes. This is something that we have been discussing within our board meetings, but all along the way, our board wants to make sure that the citizens are kept abreast as to what we are discussing in terms of how we're gonna mitigate illegal dumping and littering throughout Clayton County. So this is one of the options that we're looking at, as well as others, but the bottom line here is, we wanna make sure our citizens are aware of the types or the options that we are looking at as we move forward. Are there any questions from the board members? Thank you again. Go ahead, hold on.
I guess I don't talk fast enough. My brain is going. Question. I see the difference between county-funded, public-private partnership, but there are no dollars of a, and I know you can't go into the exact amount, but what would that split be? Because public means there's still a cost to the public, and private means there's a cost that would be for the private sector to use it. So with that being said, excuse me, what have you seen that's typical of the cost split between public-private partnership?
Sure, Commissioner. The split itself from a weighted split is pretty substantial. You're looking at, you know, probably, you know, ninety to ninety-five percent of the cost is on the shoulders of the private entity, whereas a smaller component is on the shoulders of the public entity. And the two main costs for the public entity would be the cost of land acquisition, you know, if you're looking at new lands as opposed to currently owned county lands, obviously that cost would vary depending on that scenario. And then the cost for permitting, which in this situation is relatively simple. Transfer stations are permanent through what's called permit by rule, so they do not require large design plans and suitability studies and things that would be associated with, say, a landfill or some larger solid waste handling facility. So your major cost, the major cost component for the public entity is the land.
And one more question. With that being stated, though, as we know, you said there's a cost for transferring it. So what is appealing for the private portion of it? Why, what makes it appealing for a private company to come in and to assume, because they will have cost or cost, no matter if we have the cost as a county, as residents, or if a private company, but what's gonna make it appealing for them to come in and partner?
Absolutely. What is appealing for the private entity, and especially it's for entities that are currently in your community right now doing residential collection?
Okay.
In the solid waste world, your private waste companies make the bulk of their revenue at disposal, not at collection. So if they have, if you have private entities that are working here with large presence in the residential collection, but they don't have a disposal facility nearby, they're losing a lot of that, you know, that revenue stream for them, because they're now paying another solid waste company to dispose of the waste they're collecting. So for them, the incentive would be, they essentially, a transfer station gives them a landfill for all intents and purposes. It gives them a point to which to take their waste, so they're paying themselves at that point for disposal, and then they can route that waste to their facilities outside of the county, allowing them to have a higher revenue stream as a product of their business operations.
Got it. I think that's it for now. We'll talk more.
And just to add one other thing, that if this was an option that the county would move forward with, we would move forward with, we would try to locate the transfer station somewhere centrally in the county where you wouldn't have to go, go all the way there to Lovejoy landfill, where you can go somewhere midpoint within the county. Any other questions? All right, thank you very much again.
And the last presentation for this evening, the Resource Website.
Second.
That is correct, Commissioner. Representative from Leadership Clayton.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Marcus Thorpe, and I am here along with my colleagues, Mr. Mike Montgomery, Ms. Kimberly Brad, Dr. Shantara Carter, Ms. Judy Mapp, Ms. Fay Evans, and Mr. Eric Bale. We are members of a group called One Clayton, and as you've heard, we're part of the best Leadership Clayton class. So we want to thank you all for having us here tonight, as well as, of course, Commissioner Gregory, Commissioner Franklin Warner, Commissioner Turner, and then finally, Ms., excuse me, Commissioner Hammerick. As a former Solicitor General here in Clayton County, and former District Attorney, and now Judge here in Clayton, unfortunately, I've had, come into contact with a lot of individuals, probably when they're at their worst. Now, it doesn't make them bad people, but sometimes they've made mistakes. And what I've learned over that time is that oftentimes in my position, as well as a lot of my colleagues, is that these are individuals who need help, who need resource. And so what we've done, at least for myself, this is what sort of sparked that idea when we began to talk about the project that we've done here for Leadership Clayton Class, was trying to provide resources not only to those individuals, but for the rest of the citizens here throughout Clayton County, as well as the metro area that come into this county. And so with that sort of quick introduction, ladies and gentlemen, I'm going to turn it over to my colleagues.
Good evening. Thank you. What you see up on the screen is a brand-new website called One Clayton Community Resource Guide. And what we have done is we have created a, a website as well as mobile apps where you can go online and get information. These are for families that need, for families whenever there is something that you need. So if we start with Career and Employment, we can go up to Resources at the top. There we go. And then Child Welfare. And this, it gives you a list of all the different things, every, all the places where you can go to get resources, what those resources are. If you're on your phone, you, you click on the phone number, it will actually call it for you. It comes up. If you click on the website, it takes you to the website. So these are all linked out to active websites. So in addition, we have Crisis and Intervention Safety, Education, and it, and it scrolls all the way down into Secondary Ed. So it, it, there's no, a lot of resources for people to utilize. And Elder Care for senior citizens, places where they can go and get services, Food and Clothing, Healthcare, Housing, and Veterans. And under Healthcare, there's a sub-tab of Healthcare Insurance Information. So those are the, the categories that are on there. That's a website. It is fluid, meaning it was just updated last night. It will be updated again tonight, so as more things come in, we are updating it at our times. And I'm going to turn it over to Shantara, who is going to talk about the apps that we developed.
So the, that's the website if you're sitting at your computer or at work, but if you're on the go, like I am so many days, and you actually come into contact with families that are in need or people that are in need of resources, we have our mobile app that you can download from Google or Apple. So if you have your phones, it takes just a quick second to download it. Go to One Clayton, and it's O-N-E and then the Clayton, not the number one. And you can download the app. With the app, like Kim said, it links out to the actual websites, the phone numbers, and then also we have Google Translate, so the website will be, the app will also translate into Spanish and Vietnamese. We have the Marta Bus Route Links, so many various tools for people to use. As of today, we have Defax that's utilizing it, Clayton County Libraries that's utilizing it, and we met with the Chiefs of Police, and I see Chief Roberts. They have invited us to come out to share with police officers, and we thank the Commissioners for having us here. We want to get this resource out to as many families as we can, and also businesses, schools, and everyone else that come, work with families that are in need. Because one thing, as Judge, Judge Thorpe said, when we connect families to resources, we include like, we improve like United Way always say, child well-being, we also improve the quality of life of our citizens. And that is our ultimate goal. We want everyone to have a better life, and so everyone is not at that point, but we can be at that point where we have so many incredible resources here in Clayton County.
Before we close, I just want to give a thank you to some of our community partners. First and not last, we have Adams Homes, Southern Regional Medical Center, the Clayton County Library System, Atlanta Technical College, Shambly Printing, and also the South Eighty-Five Package Store. With these community partners, they actually fiscally sponsored the project, so we also are looking for more sponsors and more partners to help, to help keep this effort going.
And we would also like to recognize our Lead Advisor from our Leadership Clayton Board, State Representative Rhonda Bono. She is directly our Lead Advisor, so thank you. So we have over two-hundred resources. There's a Contact Us on the app, Contact Us on the website as well. We also has, have Twitter. Contact Us if you'd like your business added. All of the churches from the Association of Christian Ministers, they'll be added with their resources as well. So Contact Us, and we'll contact you back.
Thank you.
Awesome, thank you.
Oh, that's right.
The board would now hear a presentation on the SLOSS update.
I'm sorry.
Can you hold one second? I think they wanted a picture.
Yes, that's what I was just asking, Chair.
We will pause for just a moment, so, to allow them to take pictures.
And as we're coming over for the picture, I just want to say thank you because we hear quite often, there is not one updated area where they can get all this, where community members can get all this information. So when Judge told me about it, I saw it on social media, I thought it was absolutely phenomenal, so thank you so much.
Good evening, Commissioners. Tonight I'd like to spotlight a progress on our SLOSS projects, and that is our Northeast Senior Center. What is, why is this Senior Center important? This Senior Center is a state-of-the-art facility with spaces that are designed for fitness, education, social gathering, and community inter, interaction. This building was designed to provide the very best support services for our senior citizen community. It's going to be located at thirty-one sixty-one Anvil Block Road in Ellenwood. It's going to be co-located on the same acreage where we have Sector One Police Precinct and the Animal Control Adoption Center that we completed just a couple of years ago. It will be more than twenty thousand square feet in size, and it will represent the fourth Senior Center in Clayton County. When the Intergenerational Center comes on and we complete it, that will represent the fifth Senior Center, which Clayton County will have, which is quite a, an accomplishment for a county that's only a hundred and forty-four square miles. I'd like to highlight some of the outdoor features. When you pull up in front of the building, there'll be a covered drop-off area which will protect those who are from the weather that are, as they exit their vehicles, as they exit or enter their vehicles. There's a sidewalk system which will circumnavigate the building, which will be perfect for power walking or taking a leisurely stroll. At the rear of the building is a large outdoor patio which will be great for social interaction, and it is adjacent to a large raised bed community garden. The floor plan design concept is based on one of, similar to a small town where you have a Main Street, where one can stroll down Main Street taking in the sights. As you enter the front entrance of this building, citizens will encounter a main corridor. And just like Main Street, as citizens take an internal stroll down the internal corridor, they'll be able to look into the various spaces and look at the various activities that are taking place within those spaces and decide which experiences they would like to have. And the activities that they'll be able to choose from will be taking place in various spaces, such as the multipurpose room. It's a large area that can be subdivided into two rooms. Will hold educational classes there. Also, that space can support theatrical performances and other social activities. Across the corridor will be a kitchen area. In the kitchen area, there'll be kitchen, there'll be cooking demonstrations, cooking classes, and when that's not going on, the kitchen area will serve as a cafe, coffee shop, a gathering area where citizens can have coffee, biscuits, and such. Across the entryway will be a media center. At the media center will be a place where seniors can engage in classes where they can learn about technology using iPads, laptops, et cetera, or they can engage in simply watching recreational, engage in recreational movie watching. As you move down the main corridor, there's a large aerobic area which could be opened up into one large room or subdivided into two areas so that you can have two different type of classes going on at the same time. Next to that is a large weight training area for those that want to engage in resistance training. Across the corridor will be an indoor lap pool for those that want to swim or engage in aquatic exercise. And of course, we're going to provide locker rooms and shower facilities. Progress to date, of course, we own the property. The concept design has been complete. The concept phase has been complete. The design phase has been complete. Our construction documents have been done, and this has gone out to bid. We expect the bid opening to be sometime next week, and we believe that we were on target to bring a bid award recommendation to the board sometime in May. We expect to break ground in June of this year. Expected construction timeline is about a year. After we complete the project, it takes about a month to go through and do a punch-out list and open the facility, so we're hoping to open the facility sometime in July of 2019. Now, it's one thing for me to show you, and show you a floor plan and talk about what the building will have. It's quite another for me to take you on a virtual tour of the building, and that's what I would like to do now. Sorry, I had to give a little shameless plug to our sponsors and allow them a little thirty seconds there at the end. I would like to, I would like to thank our staff, particularly the staff of Senior Services under Ms. Tori Strader Tanks and Jason Brookings for helping me put this together. But I also would like to introduce Mr. Renal Harris of Harrison Smith Architectural Firm, and Mark Cook of Skyline Engineering. These are two key members of the design team, along with ACOM and Greg Dixon of Moreland Altabelli. They have been key team players in this design, and along with Commissioner Gregory and her, her constituent aide, and everybody worked together to put a lot of work into the design for this project, and this is going to be a project that we are all going to be exceptionally proud of. Thank you very much.
Let's give them a round.
This video, this video and this whole presentation with the PowerPoint will be posted on our website tomorrow and will update it as progress proceeds.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation.
Mr. Chair, I know Chief, Chief Cahill has already acknowledged Director Strader Tanks. One of the things I wanted to mention, before this design even began, the div, design One of the things I wanted to mention before this design even began, the design phase, she, the Senior Services Department under Director Strader Tanks hosted two focus groups of seniors out in District One to get an idea of what seniors wanted to see in this center. It, it was kind of interesting because the needs tend to have varied from what we currently have with the Senior Centers of the Griswold and the Frank Bailey Center. And that is after the seniors kind of decided what they wanted to see, then the design team went to work on it. And so I wanted to thank her for that because both of those focus group sessions were packed and people gave their opinions and people are excited. They keep asking me, when is that Senior Center coming? And I keep telling them it's going to be the best-looking one in Metro Atlanta, not just Clayton County, Metro Atlanta. So thank you, thank you Chief Cahill.
Mr. Chairman, the board would now consider the consent agenda with the exception of Item J, which has been removed from the agenda.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Hearing none, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, issue unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, the next items are board appointments.
All right, my, Item Ten is the, is the appointment not, I'm just going to state what it is and then ask to hold it. The appointment to the Board of Elections, a registration to fill the unexpired term of Harry Osborne who resigned. The term expires on December thirty-first, twenty eighteen, and I believe that is Vice Chairman Emerson's appointment. He is not here, so I asked the board to hold it. Anybody opposed to hold? Okay. Next appointment is to the Family and Children Services Board to fill the unexpired term of Keisha Wright Hill for non-attendance. The term expires on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, is full board appointment. Is there a recommendation?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I would like to recommend Dr. Shantara Rump Carter to be on that board.
Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chair.
Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, issue unanimous. Last appointment is to the Family and Children Services Board to fill the unexpired term of Dever Lazarus who's resigned. It's a one full term. The term expires on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. Full board appointment, any recommendations? Hearing none, we'll hold that till, go ahead.
I don't talk fast enough. I would also like to recommend Mr. Charlton Vivins to be on that board.
Is there a second? I'll second that motion, are there any questions? Hearing none, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, issue unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, the last two items are zoning public hearings. The first, the applicant is Lee Mayweather on behalf of Mount Zion Ventures LLC. The request is for a conditional use permit to redevelop the existing convenience store and gasoline station property. The subject property is located at sixty-seven twenty Mount Zion Boulevard, Morrow, Georgia. The planning and zoning as well as ZAG are recommending approval with conditions. This is District One, Commissioner Gregory's district.
All right, the applicant will please take the podium, state your name and who you represent.
My name is Lee Mayweather. I'm the applicant for Mount Zion Ventures and we are requesting a conditional use permit for the property at Mount Zion and Maddox Road. In this district, general business district, we have to request a conditional use permit in order to develop, redevelop the property. It's an, presently it's an existing gasoline station and what we want to do is rebuild that corner with a new four thousand square foot convenience store that sells gasoline to the public. And then when we demolish the existing service station under the canopy, we will put two new pumps there. We've met with the technical review committees such as the zoning, planning.
I'm sorry, sir, but if you could just back a little bit away, we're getting a lot of rebirth.
We've met with the various committees and they've given their approvals and they've given their comments, their conditions, which we are aware of. And we intend, we intend to adopt those conditions in our drawings as they are developed. So we've met with the zoning advisory committee a few weeks ago and they gave their approval. So therefore, we request the Board of Commissioners to give their approval as well. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you, sir. Is there anybody here in opposition or a proponent for this applicant? This application? Anybody want to speak? All right.
Okay.
Commissioner Gregory.
With that message here, I offer motion that we accept the petition.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Hearing none, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, issue unanimous. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And the final public hearing for this evening are zoning text amendments. With the adoption of amendments to the official zoning ordinance and map and the future land use map and the zoning standards, the planning and zoning staff recommend approval. The zoning advisory group recommends approval with conditions. Upon the conclusion of the public hearing, the board will be asked to consider Ordinance two thousand eighteen thirty-three, which encompasses all of the text amendments.
Okay, this time we're going to public hearing. Is there anybody who would like to speak for or against the approval of the proposed ordinance amendment?
Evening, Carol Bossinger with Electric Guard Dog, the applicant for the request for zoning ordinance. We received a draft today of the ordinance and everything looks great. We are requesting to include light industrial with heavy industrial as a permit and then everything else as a conditional use permit. That is our only request for change in the amendment.
What's your name again?
Carol Bossinger with Electric Guard Dog.
And if you can please provide your county of residency.
Excuse me, Columbia, South Carolina.
Okay, is there anybody who would like to speak in reference to this matter? Ms. Smith.
Just, just to give a brief overview of the electric fence ordinance, the proposal is to adopt new guidelines. The current ordinance actually requires that any electric fence application goes before the Board of Zoning Appeals. And it will be reviewed by the Board of Zoning Appeals and to their determination case by case. This ordinance actually will allow for the electric fence to come before as an, as a fence application. And if it is within the heavy industrial or the light industrial zoning district, it will be allowed outright. This application and text amendment proposal went before the zoning advisory group. The zoning advisory group had two recommendations and revisions. The first revision to the proposal was to allow the heavy industrial permitted use outright, but to require a conditional use permit for light industrial. So they made the distinction between heavy industrial, you will be allowed via fence permit outright. But for any type of fence permit coming before our department, you would need a conditional use permit for light industrial uses.
So would that cover what she's asking now?
No, it would not. It would contradict what she's asking. What she wants is for, what she, what she is proposing is for the board to approve as stated, which is to allow outright electric fences in LI districts, which is light industrial districts, as well as heavy industrial.
And that, go ahead, ma'am.
I'm sorry, other districts would then be conditional use permit. We find there's a lot of cross between light and heavy that could be different, but we find there's a lot of cross as to the type of businesses that are in those zones.
But that wasn't the recommendation of the ZAG board they recommended. The conditions that they recommended for approval was what you just stated.
That's correct. The text amendment did not propose to allow electric fences in any other districts except HI and LI. So if there is a clarification issue that needs to be determined, then I would recommend that it's tabled until we have more time to meet with, with the applicant.
Was that considered when the, when the board was meeting, when the zoning board was meeting?
No. That was not the proposal.
Okay, well, it sounds like still it can be something that can be worked out. Would you be amenable to, no, you can't?
No, I'm, I'm thinking that if.
Okay. Go ahead, ma'am.
If something came up with what you're requesting, wouldn't the conditional use permit, would that be covered under that?
As of now, any type of electric fence that comes before Clayton County has to go for a variance. This proposal, if approved as ZAG has recommended approval, will only change two zoning categories. It will change the light industrial district where instead of going for a variance, you would have to go for a conditional use, which will go before ZAG and it will be heard by, by this body here to make final determination. The second part of it is it will allow any electric fence coming to the county to have to place a fence application to our office and it will be approved outright based on any type of development standards.
I think that's what I'm saying.
Yes.
Okay.
I have a question, Mr. Chair. Does anybody know what's best practice is when it comes to fences? Because I'm going to be honest, as a business owner, I will tell you. Business owners, when they, I understand we have to make sure that we get the right businesses in, we've got to make sure that our community looks good, but at the end of the day, I don't think everybody wants to put up an electrical fence unless they have something that they really need to protect in either a light industrial or heavy industrial. So I'm going to be honest, I don't understand why we're debating this, personally I don't. That's just my take on it. And I'm not for having to go back and forth between planning and zoning for business owners for something like this. I just, I don't understand why.
Mr. Hancock, you were about to say something.
I don't know, who brought, who brought this up? Where did this come from?
My understanding that it was a request that came to the zoning department by this lady's company.
Mr. Hancock, if you could, please, if you can move to the microphone, thank you.
My understanding that this was a request that was brought by her company to planning and zoning, I, I don't mean to disagree with my colleague, but I believe that the impact of the approval of this ordinance would be that electric fence would be permitted in a heavy industrial and a light industrial zoning district only.
Right.
Because this, this amends any conflicting code section very clearly says that. So to the extent that an electric fence is a variance now, that's going to go away in any other zoning district. So if you pass this ordinance as it was drafted, then it would permit a, an electric fence in LI and HI without a CUP and without a variance. The recommendation for modification that came from the zoning advisory group would be that the, it be permitted in HI but a conditional use permit in LI. The second thing that was not mentioned, but if you notice on, on the, the next item, the ordinance requires that signs be placed sixty feet apart. They recommend changing that to forty-five. Those were their two recommendations. But as the ordinance is presented before you, it does not contain those two recommendations. So procedurally, to the extent that you want to move forward with any of those, either or both of those recommended changes, Mr. Chairman, it would take a motion to amend the ordinance first to add one or both of those and that would be voted on before the ordinance itself was voted on. But I think that would be the impact is the way I've explained it to you.
Any other questions from the board? Any other statements from you?
We would be happy with the ordinance as it's written.
I think that's a good idea.
Thank you.
All right. So again, I ask if there's anybody who would like to speak in reference to this amendment? Zone and text amendments. Yes. Anybody like to speak? All right, hearing none, then I believe this was a public hearing, so I'll take a motion to go out of public hearing.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
I'll second if those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Issue unanimous. Is there a motion on this matter?
I make a motion that we accept the ordinance as written with the only, I guess, change? Is that right? For the forty-five feet apart for the sign.
Is there a second? I'll second the motion, any questions? Hearing none, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed. All right, now we have to, Mr. Hancock, take a motion on the.
I think that's sufficient.
Okay.
The way it was worded, I think we're fine.
Okay, great. All right. Is there a need for executive session?
Yes, sir, I'm sorry, it is on vacation, I will say so.
All right, if there's no other, any other business for the board, I'll take a motion to go into executive session.
So moved.
Is there a second? I'll second, those in favor, aye. Opposed, issue unanimous. Everybody have a good evening. All right, motion to reconvene. I'll second, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, issue unanimous, Mr. Ray.
Would you like me to take them all together?
Yes, please.
All right, I have a request to resolve a case involving Randy Davis, an accident that occurred on January ninth, two thousand sixteen on Terra Boulevard at or near its intersection with Upper Riverdale Road and unincorporated Clayton County in the amount of thirteen thousand dollars. I also have a request to resolve a case involving Mary Jo Bradley involving an accident that occurred on or around January ninth, two thousand sixteen on Terra Boulevard at or near its intersection with Upper Riverdale Road and unincorporated Clayton County, Georgia in the amount of eight thousand five hundred dollars. And finally, I have a request to resolve a property damage claim relating to an incident that occurred on March twenty-ninth, two thousand seventeen at Fayetteville Road and North Avenue. The pay is Westfield Insurance Company and the claimant is Kelly Nix in the amount of eleven thousand nine hundred thirty-seven dollars and sixteen cents.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions on any of those? Hearing none, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, issue unanimous.
Thank you.
So moved.
I can get one now. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed.